And gentlemen, it's a little bit after 7:00 P.M., so let me call to order the Merrimack Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, June 20th, 2017. Let me remind everyone who will address the board to make sure your microphones are turned on to speak clearly into them so the folks at home can hear you. Also, please sign in on the clipboard that's on the table. Let me appoint Nelson into a voting position for Vincent Russo. And that certainly gives us a quorum. With that, I don't have any other announcements. Oh, our next meeting will be on July 18th, 2017, at 7:00 P.M. There is no meeting in that first Tuesday of July because of the proximity to the Fourth of July.
It is actually the Fourth of July, Mr. Chairman.
On the Fourth of July.
That is approximate.
Yeah, it's right there on top of it. And so we won't be meeting that first Tuesday as we would normally do. With that, that brings us to our Planning and Zoning Administrators' report. Robert, is there anything that you'd like to report to us?
Nothing from me, just the regional impacts today.
So in our package, there is a recommendation, a regional impact study memorandum related to all of the projects on our agenda tonight, or at least any of those that we haven't done before, New Hampshire Hydraulics, the Kavanagh and Vashon, the Listalka subdivision. So we've got all three of those with a recommendation by staff that they are not a regional impact. Is that correct? Is there a recommendation of that here?
Yep.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation and determine that none of these three items have any regional impact.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Second.
Second by Lynn Christensen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero, two. Uphold the staff's recommendation about regional impacts. Robert, if you don't have anything else, let's see if any of the members of the board have any questions for staff. Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is Item Three, Edgbrooke Heights, LLC, Wiggston Properties, LLC, and Q. Peter Nash, 1987 Revocable Trust, One, as the co-applicants and co-owners. This is a continued request for consideration of reinstatement and extension of final approval of an application for a conditional use permit to permit a future mixed-use development consisting of retail office, multifamily residential, and assisted living. Parcels are located at 137, 39, 55, and an unnumbered parcel on DW Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Aquifer Conservation, and Flood Hazard Conservation Districts, Tax Map 1E, Lot 4, 1, 4, 2, 2, Tax Map 2E, Lots 6, 2, 7, and 8. The item has been continued from our May 16th Planning Board meeting. The applicant is requesting that we continue this indefinitely as they resolve some various issues that they need to attend to, and I have it on good advice that that's a wise thing for us to do, is to allow them to do that. Doing so, though, will require that they provide new abutter notifications whenever they do come forward with this project to seek that renewal. Robert, did I get all that right?
Yep.
Anything, any other comments or questions about that item?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the request of the various applicants to have an indefinite extension of their final approval to allow them to resolve.
Table it.
Oh, table it.
Just continue.
Table it, all right. Table it.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Second by Desiree Fault. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to table the application, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero for that one. That brings us to Item Four on our agenda, which is KNA Associates, Inc., Keach Nordstrom, and Charles H. Hazen as the applicant, and Richard P. and Julian D. Hazen as the owners. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a lotline adjustment and subdivision plan for a five-parcel minor subdivision. The parcels are located at 90 and 94 Wilson Hill Road in the R-1 Residential and Aquifer Conservation and Flood Hazard Conservation Districts, Tax Map 4B, Lot 114, 114, and 114, too. The item has been continued from the May 16th, 2017 Planning Board meeting. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
There's just a couple of items. Since the last meeting, the Planning Board at that meeting had requested that I pose a number of questions to Public Works. In your packets, you have a sheet, is an email, where all of those questions have been responded to by Deputy Director Tuamala. Just wanted to also remind the board that there is one outstanding waiver still with this application pertaining to right-of-way work that needs your action tonight. And the last item to discuss is, as you saw in Gillian's memo, the applicant provided a site distance plan and profile sheet that shows a driveway that encroaches on Lot 4B, Lot 114, into the wetland setback area. There's question as to whether or not a special exception is required based on how the zoning ordinance language is written, so staff is asking the Planning Board to decide based on the language in Section 2.02.7.8.3.0I to make a determination if the driveway is essential to the development or use of the parcel, to the productive use of the land. We can pull that section up, and I can read it for you later when you get to it if you need to. I'm sure Mr. Cole can also reference this as well. But the board needs to make a decision on that.
Okay. Remind me at the appropriate time to make sure that we don't skip past that bit of business. And with that, please introduce yourself and tell us where we're at with the project.
My name is Brent Cole, Keach Nordstrom Associates.
Brent, I don't think your microphone's on.
Am I on?
Well, you're too far away from it, Dan. Can you?
Am I on?
You are, and now you're close enough, although it would be quite that close.
So my name is Brent Cole, Keach Nordstrom Associates, tonight representing the Hazen family for the minor subdivision that the chair just stated. We were here on May 16th. We left here with some direction to seek answers from the DPW and staff. Before I get into those, I think it'd be smart to talk about what Mr. Price brought up with the zoning ordinance in the driveway. From my understanding, and Mr. Chair, if I'm wrong here, please, please let me know, but staff have been asked by this board to weigh in on the zoning regulation, whether the accessway is essential to the productive use of the land. If the, if the board deems this access is necessary, then no relief is required from the ZBA. When the subdivision was laid out, access to this portion of the lot was always to be derived from Wilson Hill. This lot has adequate frontage along Wilson Hill, so it only makes sense that the access comes from its legal frontage. There is valuable and developable land situated in the heart of Lot 114, where the parcel overlooks Sauhegan River. This lot is flanked by wetlands on the west side and a steep three-to-one slope on the east side that makes access from Uppam Road unachievable without significant costs and significant disturbance associated with that driveway and everything. So the driveway would bifurcate the wetlands without impacting them in order to access this lot regardless if a subdivision came through. This 10-acre parcel requires access to the developable portion, so a single-family home can be constructed, and we feel a single-family home is a productive use of the land since this zoning district is residential. We can go, if you want to talk about that now, or we can, I can conclude my presentation. We can talk about the questions and answers from the DPW.
Please continue with your presentation, and then we'll...
So we left here, May 16th, reaching out to the DPW and asking them the questions that was, that were posed by this board. We did receive an email from DPW, which you should have in your packet, and I'd be more than willing to read through Dawn Tuamola's responses to your questions. I think she laid out each, each response very nicely, so it's probably smart to have it on the record.
Well, it's in the record by virtue of being a document. Please summarize the important, salient points that you want to, without necessarily reading it word for word.
So the first question asked was, are you satisfied with the proposed hammerhead as opposed to the cul-de-sac? And she pretty much claims that the, the hammerhead is a better-suited turnaround for this area rather than a cul-de-sac. This area is within the shoreline protection area, and a cul-de-sac will have a larger impact on that. The hammerhead, she, she comments about the design that we had. She recommends adjusting the length and the width, which we can easily accommodate. She sent over a detail that they used over on Old Blood Road, and that has worked perfect. Fire can get in and out of there, and we've already looked at that, and we can accommodate the exact turnaround that Old Blood Road has. So we are, we feel that a hammerhead will be good in this, in this particular case at the end of Old Uppam Road, at the end of Uppam Road.
Okay.
The next one was, is Uppam Road supposed to be paved? There was some confusion at the, at the Planning Board hearing last time, whether, whether the road was going to be paved or not paved. I think the confusion stemmed from a note on the plan that said impervious area, and that was for shoreline. Shoreland deems gravel, any sort of hard surface as impervious, so clarification on that note on the plan, I think, will clear some things up. She has commented on that, and she has basically said that there's no, no reason that the road cannot remain gravel, as well as the turnaround remaining gravel as well, and it was their understanding that, that the road was meant to, to be gravel.
Could I interrupt you just to that point?
Of course.
You have seen the point that's made, that you want it to brought up to the town's gravel-based standards.
Any area that we disturb brought up to the gravel-based standards.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep, so, so anytime, when we replace that culvert, we'll bring that up to the standard, and any sort of work we do with a hammerhead will, will be up to the standard.
Thank you very much.
The third question was, are there, is there any flow going through the existing culvert under Uppam Road, or is it completely blocked? She responds by saying, yes, there is flow, no, it is not completely blocked. And the next question was, is a replacement in-kind solution for Uppam Road culvert as being proposed the best option? She laid out two options. Both are full replacement. One is with an RCP pipe, and one is with an HDPE pipe. If we're not able to achieve three feet of cover, we'll have to go with the RCP. I'm confident that we can achieve three feet of cover, because there's three feet of cover over the RCP pipe now, so we will be going with an HDPE pipe. She comments that if the subdivision were impacting the land with a large increase in impervious, there would be no need, there would be need to restrict the flow going through the pipe. In this particular case, unless drainage calculations were approved otherwise, only one house and driveway will be adding to the flow that goes into the pipe. There will be enough land area between the proposed house and the drainage way to filter and infiltrate the runoff. The second house on the other side of the road won't impact the culvert. She also states that no matter what the current conditions are on the existing pipe, the drainage calculations will be based upon the whole pipe and not the block pipe. That would provide the maximum amount of water that, that could flow through that pipe. The fifth question was, are you satisfied with the proposed slopes, three-to-one on the west side of Uppam Road, two-to-one on the east side, C. number six below regarding requested waiver? In this particular case, or her response was, in this particular case, yes, a three-to-one slope on the west side, two-to-one on the east side, both will be fine with head walls. And then the last question was, can you provide us with any input on the applicant's requested waiver from Section 418 of the Site Plan Regulations? And her response was pretty, pretty short, so I'll just read it. As stated previously, a waiver for the side slopes is acceptable, and it should not include the right of, but it should include the right-of-way width. The waiver states that the right-of-way width is variable. It should be at least 25 feet from the center line, or 50 feet where possible if the land is owned on both sides of the right-of-way. We take no exception to this. We've already started revising the plan to, to accommodate a 50-foot right-of-way out there.
At the culvert, or everywhere?
25 feet on the, on the side that we own. We don't own a portion of Uppam Road, but anytime that we do own all of Uppam, both sides of Uppam Road, we'll accommodate the 50-foot right-of-way.
Great.
As, there were a few things that, that DPW and I have been working on. One of those was situating driveways on each lot, so proper site distance. We've, we've presented a plan. We went out to the site with stakes, staked where we thought the driveway should be. She went out to the site, that being Dawn Tuamola, to look at the site distance. She had a few comments. We'll be able to revise the plans and, and address all of her comments. And then last would be the replacing of the culvert. We do plan on replacing that culvert completely and not just extending it. I believe I've stated that a few times. So the last thing on the agenda tonight would be the, the one waiver. We've already had one waiver approved, so we just have the, the second waiver, which is for the roadway standards at the, at the culvert.
Okay. So did you see the recommendations from the Sauhegan River Local Advisory Committee?
I did.
Yep. Do you have any comments on what they're asking you to do, or suggesting that we ask you to do?
I don't believe I have them on me. Do you have, you have a couple of them?
Essentially, they want a box, open bottom box culvert there so that animals or critters could get through that culvert if it was built that way. Robert's handling you one now.
Perfect. Yeah, that, that's, an open box culvert through that area would be something that we may design if, if this was a new project. Box culvert require extensive amounts of fill over, over the, the road, and it wouldn't be necessary. The 36-inch pipe that's there today is completely adequate, and the four-by-four box culvert would actually, it could actually potentially add more drainage down to the, to the, to the neighboring.
How much cover do you need over a box culvert? Why four-by-four? Does it have to be that big?
They don't, they don't make anything smaller than. I don't even know if four-by-four is the smallest. It, it may be, it may be bigger than that. It could be a four-by-six, or, but they don't make much smaller than, than that.
Okay.
They're not, they're not intended for, they're not intended for the smaller uses. Usually up to a 48-inch pipe is completely adequate, so.
Do you know how much ground cover, or soil cover you need over a box culvert like that?
Usually two to three feet.
You're at two or three feet here, aren't you?
We've got 36-inch, no, 15-inch pipe, right? I believe it's a 15-inch pipe with three feet of cover.
Oh, okay, so a bigger culvert's gonna have less cover built up over it? I got you. Okay. I understand that. I think that's the only recommendation that they have in their memo, correct? Nelson, you have got some...
...consideration for the, to the question raised at the Sauhegan River worship regarding...
Nelson, you're not turned, you're not switched on?
Question was raised by the Sauhegan River, at the Sauhegan River Local Advisory Committee regarding the lot to the left, as I look at it here, I guess it's the westerly lot, and the driveway that threads its way between two wetlands. And there is no connection shown between those two wetlands. And the question was, that looked odd, because both of those wetlands are being fed by culverts under Wilson Hill Road, and what happens to that water? Is it all infiltrating under all circumstances, or should there be a culvert? I guess that was the question.
Likely there will be a culvert under that driveway. The driveway plan that we gave you was just a draft, that it was in no intention of actually being built. Whomever the homeowner of this parcel will, will have that designed.
They will have to do, they will have to put in a culvert.
Yes, there'll be a culvert under that driveway.
And I think from your testimony earlier, that, I didn't realize box culverts only came in size four and up, four feet and up, and that would obviously be overkill in this particular case.
Right.
So that would be the only other comment that, that was raised at that meeting.
Let me make sure I was clear on the conversation about the culvert between the wetlands, because I think I came away believing that there would definitely be a culvert there, but are you saying it's up to the home builder to design their driveway, and if they need one, there'll be one? Or there will definitely be one?
I can't say what the homeowner will do, but I wouldn't want water coming over my driveway. I would assume that they would put a culvert there. I just, I can't make that claim. I don't know what the homeowner will actually do, if they'll even, if they even put a driveway there, period.
And our subdivision plans don't reach the construction of a driveway at this point.
But the driveway will have to be approved by DPW, and at that time, I would imagine she would recommend a culvert.
Yeah. If this was a site plan, we'd tell you to put a culvert in there, but as a subdivision, we don't deal with the driveways and the house sites.
If the homeowner asked me to do it, I'd put a culvert in, too.
I mean, it makes some sense to do that. So this question about whether that access off of Wilson Hill is essential to that lot that's got the really long and strange configuration on it. Got the old man of the mountain there on the left of it, too. It's for the board to take up and consider whether there's any other means of accessing that lot, or whether access off of Wilson Hill Road through that wetland, or between those two wetlands, is essential. I did flip through the plans to take a look at the topographic map as to whether there's some access off of Uppam Road through those other lots, or between those two other lots. And there's either wetlands or steep slopes at the boundaries of the lots that you might try to weave between to get there. So it could be pretty difficult to deal with Uppam Road, and that's what the applicant has represented to us, is that it would be expensive and difficult. So does the board have any general discussion about the notion of that access off of Wilson Hill Road, whether that is essential to the development of this land, or do you have questions of the applicant in order to explore that question? How'd you like to proceed? Nelson?
Well, I'll just give you my, my thoughts on it. The question about that driveway had to do as much with site distance as anything else. On Wilson Hill Road, it's kind of curvy there, and do we have the site distance at the proper elevation and setback from the pavement that, that's requested by, by DPW?
Yes, we do. We, we were asked to increase that site distance because average speeds are out there are roughly around 35 miles an hour rather than the 30 mile an hour.
Or at least, yeah.
So we increased that, and we, we were still able to have a site distance. She has recommended cutting some trees within the right-of-way, which we take no exception to.
So Dawn was out there verifying that with you?
Correct. I wasn't on-site with her, but we staked where the driveway was, would be, and she went out to the site to visually check it.
Does that help your question?
Yeah, that was my comment, yeah.
Okay. Alistair?
There is, Mr. Chairman, one other little item from the South River Authority, is they're referring, Sauhegan River, sorry. They're referring to the, the wall that can be seen across the river, because it was, it's the sort of old vertical wall. Can we assume that you take the point that Lot 114-9, the stone walls of which are the remains of an old mill, we hope that these could be, either you're gonna give a guarantee that you're gonna look after them, and I know you'll say it's the homeowner again, but we want somebody, either if we don't ask you to do it and you commit to it, then we've got to presumably, I would suggest, go to the Merrimack Historical Society or the Heritage Commission to see if we can preserve those wall, that building. I mean, I'm, I'm all for preserving history, as long as it doesn't totally inconvenience everybody. I would like to hope those, that could be preserved. You have a comment, I guess?
The, the lot that's in question right now is for the Hazens' daughter. They have no intention of, of ever removing that. This lot has been in their family for, for a long time, and they love the history about it just as much as, as you guys do. I don't know if there's any way to, to actually preserve it in perpetuity, but for right now, I can, I can assure you that they have no intention, and, and to remove that wall would, being so close to the Sauhegan River, would have to jump through so many hoops with wetlands and shoreline and everything, that it wouldn't be worth it. I don't know why anyone would want to.
That's fine, thank you very much.
Thanks, Alistair, for bringing that up. Okay, so back to this question about whether the access off Wilson Hill Road is essential to this lot or not. And the result of that question is that if it's essential, they can proceed. If it's not essential, they need a special exception from the ZBA in order to use that driveway location.
Mr. Chairman, if we prove difficult, it would be my thinking that the ZBA would be probably very friendly and let them do it, so I would like to make a suggestion, we give, we don't require them to go for the ZBA, we, we allow them to do it for the development of the land. That's a suggestion.
Well, I tend to support the idea that, that the access is essential, because I've looked at some of those other lots.
Yes.
But I'd like us to make the decision based on whether it actually is essential, and not what we think the ZBA will or won't do.
Good point.
I don't, I don't see any other options, really, so I think it is essential.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have comments or questions?
I guess I'm curious, what's the zoning wording that makes it something that we need to be considering?
Robert, you want to read that section to us? You said you'd dig it out for us.
Okay, so the issue here is, it's under permitted uses, and it says, "Any use that does not result in the erection of any structure or alter the surface configuration by the addition of fill or by degrading, and that is otherwise permitted by the zoning ordinance." And pardon me, this is in the Wetlands Conservation District that I'm reading from. And you go down the list of forest and tree farming, agriculture, water impoundments, well supplies, et cetera. And on the bottom, it says, "Streets, roads, and other accessways, if essential to the productive use of land, not so zoned."
So if it's essential to the productive use of the land, then it's allowed in this zone, and if not, then they need a special exception to have it be allowed in this zone.
And just for a little information, or additional, we're asking the board to kind of weigh in on this, because it says that streets and roads and other accessways are essential. We, staff has not actually determined before, or a determination has not been made before, if a driveway falls under this category. That's where we're looking for the board's inputs, we have something to go with going forward.
But it, but it says access, right?
It does say other accessways.
And this is accessway to that lot, so I think it would, would be considered.
Yeah, I think it would fall into that zoning regulation. What's the will?
One small point. There is another access. As I look at your map on the wall, I see the dead-end section of Uppam Road almost reaches that lotline, does it not? Or am I not able to see it from here?
It's, it's a ways away.
A ways away.
Couple hundred feet away.
Is it that far away? Yeah. Okay, I was asking Brett.
Let's take a look at that and see.
Can you show us the end of Uppam Road and, and its associated hammerhead?
It would certainly be 150 feet, Mr. Chairman.
Well, just show me where it is. It's there, okay.
Yeah, go there.
I didn't know if it continued on. Okay.
So is that, that's the end of it as it exists today, but your hammerhead is gonna be within that area, or is it gonna extend into the lot where the house is today?
It'll be within that area.
No, the hammerhead extends into the lot.
It shows extending into that lot.
A little bit further than your pink lines, I think.
There's a, there's a, there's an existing easement for the hammerhead.
And there's a proposed easement.
And there's a, there'll be a proposed easement, because the hammerhead is larger than what they thought it would be back in the day. It does extend a little bit into the lot, but it doesn't go past the easement that, that exists.
Well, okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
It brings to mind something else, Mr. Chairman. If, when you get to it, I'd like to comment.
Okay. So if, as you look past where that hammerhead's gonna be, if you follow that lotline that they're proposing, you're kind of right on the edge of...
The river.
The rockiness and the slopes.
Steep.
So you'd be going up, first up and then down, and then halfway around the side of some steep slopes to, you know, try to follow that lotline around?
So that's not a practical place to bring it in? Yeah.
You know, that's one of those things we've talked about before. If you're, if you're an engineer, anything is doable.
Well, I didn't say, I didn't say doable, I said practical.
But is it practical? Other comments or questions?
Much as I dislike seeing that driveway go between the wetlands, I can't argue with you about the only viable access point. So if we're, if we're making the assumption that the land is to be used for a house, then that's the only way I can think you could get there.
So it seems like most of us have kind of at least given an indication one way or another. We can take up a motion and vote, or if the board would like, I think there's probably some people here in the audience who'd like to offer us some thoughts and considerations before we would make that kind of decision. Let's allow them to do that. Are there other areas of the application that you want to discuss with the applicant before we open up for public hearing?
Yes, I do. I'd like to go back to Dawn Tuamola's comments, and in my discussions with her, and also noted in the, the marked-up copies that we have, she says, "What is being proposed within the turnaround area is not clearly defined to me."
Which question are you looking at?
I'm looking under question two.
Okay.
Red paragraph two.
Okay.
And it says, however, what is proposed within the turnaround is not defined to me. The intent should be made clearer in the area, that is, dimensions and proposed spot elevations at the critical points. It appears that drainage is flowing directly across the turnaround area, and it would also be good to have snow storage areas designated that will be reasonable to plow to. I wish you would address those issues. I was having great difficulty seeing what you were gonna do there. In fact, I don't think you've quite designed that yet, am I right?
There, there is a design in place. It, it has grown probably twice the size since our, since our original design, and I actually have an exhibit, this hasn't been given to Dawn yet, but it, it is the exact hammerhead that she gave us.
The model she gave you to use?
So, I bring that up on the, it's a little more, it's easier to see.
I thank you for drawing pink on the line, though, that helped. You gotta stay by the microphone. It's probably okay if you could stay back where you were, but that way cameras and Robert and everybody can get a chance to look at it.
Get the micro.
There's a portable one over there.
Or just pick that one up.
Yeah, you can pick that one up, go ahead.
The end of Upham Road here. You'll see the hammerhead, the seventy-two-by-sixty-five-foot hammerhead that comes in. Fire truck will turn around and head out Upham Road.
Okay. And have you resolved the questions that she's had about drainage running across the turnaround area and all of that? Because certainly I don't want to have drainage running across it.
So, her issue was the drain is associated with this home coming on to the turnaround. And we've graded in a ditch that circumvents and outlets down here so that there'll be no storm, there'll be no stormwater or surface water that enters the turnaround. Snow storage areas will be indicated, but they'll likely be in through here as the snowplow will wing the snow into that ditch.
Where does that drainage go from there, once it's in the ditch? Right to the river?
Correct.
Where does it go today?
Right to the river.
Through the wetlands.
Okay.
Does it go into the wetlands first?
There are adjacent wetlands associated with South Heagan River, so yeah, we'll make it through the wetlands first.
Does the drainage from that ditch go into the wetlands before it goes into the South Heagan River?
Yes.
Yes.
Other comments or questions? Seeing none, let's open it up for the public to weigh in and offer us their opinions. Does anybody, any butters or interested citizens wish to weigh in and offer the board any considerations on this application? Going once? I'm surprised, going twice, okay. They'll close the public hearing. And with that, without any, since there's been no public comment, let's take up that question we were dealing with, with that driveway, and have a motion and a vote on that. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the proposed driveway for lot one-fourteen shall be allowed to go through the wetlands as it is considered essential for the use of that particular part of the property.
Desiree had the second because she was trying to get the motion out before.
What's the waiver reason, though?
Oh, it's not a waiver for this one. It's just a finding that it's essential.
It's just a finding, okay, thank you.
Thank you for that, Desiree, to make sure that we're on the right path. Is there any discussion regarding the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six-zero-zero for that finding. And then, we've received a lot of feedback from Dawn about the culvert and that situation. I can say that I went out to the site between meetings to take a look at the culvert, and I can confirm what Dawn said, that there is water flowing through it. And so, although that vernal pool is there, seasonally, that may change. And when you put a fresh culvert in there, I don't think that you're adding runoff of your lot, which was one of the concerns that I had from before. You may be slowing it down with the semi-blocked culvert now, but you're not impounding it, you're not increasing it or decreasing it by what you're talking about doing with this proposal. So, I'm happy about that bit. And with respect to the hammerhead, I think that we've asked all of the pertinent questions that we can ask of our DPW, and if they're satisfied with it, I think I defer to them. Even though I would really rather see something different. Nelson?
Well, no, I was just going to say, I think any approval we give should condition upon her agreement with this revised drawing. Because we have not seen this revised drawing at all.
Right.
Okay, for the record.
Okay, so, Robert, add that to our potential list of conditions that we want to have Dawn give a final approval of the configuration of this hammerhead. Any other discussion by members of the board?
Do we have to grant a waiver for the?
For the roadway conditions around the culvert, yes.
Yes.
Because of the two-to-one slopes on one side and three-to-one slopes on the other.
That's what I was thinking.
What's the will of the board with respect to that? Now, Dawn has also weighed in on that, and she thought, under the circumstances, that that's an acceptable solution.
I'd like to make a motion for a waiver for the slopes as presented, for the two-to-one and the three-to-one. Given that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant in a waiver, it would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Is there a second for Desiree's motion? Alistair has a second for that one. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six-zero-zero for that motion. And with that, there are no other pending waivers or motions or actions required of the board other than to take up the question of conditional final approval and whether the board is willing to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant conditional final approval of this project subject to all the conditions outlined in the memo from Gillian Harris stated June fourteenth, twenty seventeen, together with the additional item we've just talked about, the approval of the hammerhead design, the final approval to be given by the Public Works Department.
Is there a second by Alistair's motion? Desiree has the second. Any discussion?
Just one more thing. The fire department should also weigh in on this, on that turnaround. And I don't know if that's been considered, has it?
I saw in Dawn's notes that she was commenting based on the turnaround distance required of snowplow trucks, and I thought I mentioned that.
And fire, it does mention fire engines. I think they've always done that.
They've got it figured out so that one.
Okay, at one point, she told me that the DPW requires less space than a fire truck.
She specifically mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought that, I saw it somewhere.
Okay, it's covered then.
Actually, I think that's why she chose a design that's already been approved and used somewhere else, because it's identical to something.
She's using the Old Blood Road, which was approved by both.
Okay. The one thing I'd want to say as a part of further discussion is just thank the applicant for the patience to come back here again, work through a couple of these questions that we had to get solved to understand what you've got going on. I thank you for doing that and for presenting the information. With that, all in favor? I'm sorry, what?
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six-zero-zero for final approval.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
You're all set, thank you very much.
Are you a dad now?
I am.
Congratulations.
Seven-pound baby girl.
Awesome, good for you. I forgot all about that.
Congratulations. Mother and child are doing well.
Very well, yes.
But you're not getting any sleep.
Zero sleep.
No, you're not going to. You can just keep making excuses about how, hon, you gotta go into another planning board meeting and. All right. Next item on our agenda is item five, which is William Lestalka as the applicant and Land of Goshen LLC as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a subdivision plan for a twelve-lot cluster subdivision. The parcel is located at six Watkins Road in the R1 residential in Oxford Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map four C, lot four-four-nine. And Robert, this is the one we've got a request to continue, don't we?
Yes, that's correct.
When do they want to be continued to?
They are looking for the July meeting.
So, the July eighteen?
Yes.
When did we get that?
That is.
Last minute, last minute, it's here. Last minute. Last minute because they continue. Their plans are wrong because of the drug.
That was one of the memos and things sitting here, right?
Yeah, I've only got a copy in front of you, Bob. It was right at the end of the day that they sent that in. That's why everybody else is kind of looking around going, huh?
That's Brad's. I don't see it.
All right, I can.
I trust you if you tell me it was here. So, it's a request by the applicant to continue to the July eighteenth meeting so that they can make some corrections and changes to their plans. I know you pointed to it, but.
I'll grab the one out of the file if you want to read it into the record.
I don't think that'll have much substance of other than what I just said, will it?
A little bit more.
Let's hear what it says.
Oh, I got it. Good afternoon, Robert. We're in Ceder, your staff memorandum and staff's concerns regarding MVD's comments relating to water service for the proposed development. As we discussed earlier, we have communicated with MVD, and there does not appear to be any issues with MVD supply water for this project, but they have requested that we provide them with elevations on their datum so that they can evaluate water pressures on-site for each of the proposed homes. In an effort to make our time before the planning board as productive as possible, we have decided to request a continuance this evening to the July eighteenth Planning Board Meeting. This will allow us adequate time to address MVD's comments as well as addressing other comments outlined in the memorandum. We look forward to attending and presenting this project on July eighteenth Planning Board Meeting. Please do not hesitate to contact me should you have any questions. Thank you, Chad Brandon of PE of Fieldstone Land Consultants. So, essentially, they're picking up on a need to resolve the issue that the staff picked up on, which is, we haven't established a water supply for the cluster subdivision, and without a water supply, we wouldn't have a complete application. So, it makes sense to hear that at another time, once they've got that solution resolved, if they're able to.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we table the item until the June, July the eighteenth meeting at seven PM in this room, as requested by the applicant, with no further notification to a part of this.
Second by Lynn Christensen, all in favor?
Could we have a discussion?
Sure.
Question, your memo, he said, the memo said, referred to the MVD water problem and other problems. I think it said, and other items. What were those other items? Because I have a list of my own.
Well, they're in the staff memo.
Pardon?
The staff memo listed several problems.
The staff memo lists a few.
The staff memo, oh, what are listed?
If you read the memo of June fifteenth from Robert Best, there's a whole load of little things, minor things.
That's what they say. This will allow us adequate time to address MVD's comments as well as addressing other comments outlined in the memo.
Okay, so that doesn't include any comments that I might have, but we can save them for the meeting?
If you think that they are beneficial to provide them the staff so staff can communicate them, and maybe they can fix them ahead of time?
I will try and do that.
Okay. With that.
Still need a vote.
Yes. Any other discussion on the motion to continue? What's that? No public hearing if all we're doing is continuing. We haven't accepted it or even submitted. Hang on, let's get our vote and then we'll ask your question. We have a motion.
I made a motion.
Motion, you second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six-zero-zero to continue to July eighteenth. Let me have it. Got to get you a microphone. Come onto a microphone and introduce yourself.
Just through my name, it's just a very simple question.
Sure.
I was just curious, how many times can an applicant file for a continuance?
Indefinitely, as many times as they want. Okay, so, that one, we will see on July eighteenth. Item six on our agenda is Scott and Renee Kavanaugh and Eleanor Rose Vaschan as the applicant and owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a lot line adjustment. The parcels are located at twenty Greenleaf Street and nine Kramer Hill Road in the R Residential District, tax map two A, lot forty-two and forty-two dash twenty-two. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just to really, just to kind of echo what was out in the staff memo. With this project, one of the lots is, lot forty-two twenty-two is indicated as being an R1 lot, which requires a two-hundred-and-fifty-feet of frontage. In this case, only two-hundred-and-thirty-six roughly is being provided. So, a variance is going to be required for the creation of that lot post lot line adjustment, and we've addressed that in the proposed conditions of approval. The other lot, lot forty-two, is indicated as being R2 by soils. It is really close to tell, just by looking at a map, if it's actually R1 or R2. We've asked the applicant to provide calculations to get us an exact number so we can determine exactly what it is. If it is indeed R2, then there's not going to be a variance. If it's, if it actually is R1, then another variance will be needed. And again, that's addressed in the proposed conditions of approval.
Thank you for that, Robert. I also want to, well, there's a letter received from an butter, which, when we get to the appropriate point to look at a public hearing, I'll read into the record. It hasn't, there's a handful of copies around, and some of us have had a chance to look at it, but I'm going to read it in its entirety since we all haven't had a chance to look at it. With that, please introduce yourself and tell me about your project.
Sure, my name's Paul Chisholm. I'm a project engineer with Keach Nordstrom Associates, representing the applicant tonight. This project's a simple lot line adjustment. There's two existing lots of record, as you know, forty-two dash two-two, which has existing frontage on Kramer Hill Road. In the past ten years or so, the project actually, this was one parcel that split out into two. At that time, lot forty-two dash twenty-two didn't have the appropriate amount of frontage, so it went to the ZBA to get variance for that, which obviously still runs with the property today. Lot forty-two, in this case, will be reduced in size, and a chunk of this, of area along Greenleaf Street will be given to lot forty-two dash two-two. And really, at the heart of the project is constructability and desirability of driveway construction for the purpose of building a single-family home. Kramer Hill Road is just significantly higher than Greenleaf Street, and there's much flatter land down closer to Greenleaf Street. So, the idea is really just to be able to provide frontage so they can build a driveway to the single-family home on that property. I've reviewed the staff report and comments with the applicant. He doesn't take any exception to any of them. Will work with staff and the zoning board if needed to clear up any of those issues, so nothing on our end there. And I think at this point, I can, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
So, tell me what the status is of Old Kings Highway?
So, this also dates back to the original subdivision of this parcel. There's an easement that runs along the east side of lot forty-two that essentially would replace that. I don't know the particulars of how that was approved last time or what was promised at that time, but whatever it was will still run with this plan as well. So, unfortunately, that's all I know about that.
Okay. I'm seeing approximate location of Old Kings Highway written on your plan.
Correct, yep.
And it's similar to, or at least parts of it are similar to, what you can see from the satellite picture. But the satellite picture also has what appears to be either trails or walkways or something that go all the way up to Kramer Road. Are there trails on the site that go to Kramer Road now?
No, I don't believe there are. I mean, you know, he's had to clear to do test pits and stuff like that in there, so my guess is it's probably just for access into those areas. The houses obviously are going to be located in the middle of these parcels.
Well, this satellite isn't new, this is many years old. Have you seen this?
No, I haven't.
Take a look at it. The part of it that is on your proposed lot forty-two is consistent with what you've drawn on your plan as the location of Old Kings Highway. But the stuff that's on proposed forty-two dash twenty-two in the satellite picture, I don't know what that is.
Right. Yeah, I don't either. You know, this survey was done back before, I think back in two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight. So, you know, we haven't updated it with any, you know, you don't generally need to topo something twice, but, you know, in this case, I think that actually looks like where they had a driveway designed at one point in time from Kramer Hill Road down to where this house is. I don't know that it's a walking trail. It certainly didn't exist when this survey was first done. Otherwise, we would have picked it up, so it was something that was done after the fact.
So, is the, the thing that's shown on your plan as the existing fifteen-foot-wide pedestrian access easement, the one along the sideline of the property, which is the replacement for Old Kings Highway from an old subdivision when that was decided?
Correct.
Is that something that you could actually walk on? Is it cleared of brush, or is it?
I don't believe it is at this time, no.
So, it doesn't really function as a pedestrian access easement? That's why the neighbors like the old one? Okay. Other comments or questions by members of the board? Nelson?
No, I can just add a few comments here. That, the called fifteen-foot-wide access easement was put in at the time of the subdivision with the idea of replacing the Old Kings Highway that ran right through the middle of the lot. of the lot, and to give people a walking access and connection to, as you see, it runs off the map here at the top of the page, and connects to other sections of Old Kings Highway. So this is, was put in there as a possible alternative walking path to bring it up to Greenleaf Street. The, as a replacement for the old, what's called the Old Kings, existing trail. Apparently, no one's ever tried to make use of lot 24, or 42, sorry, and so it hasn't been built on, so the trail's still there. It's the easiest way to walk through there, if people are walking on it.
Through the old trails? So is there, is there anything either physically present on the site or required in that old approval that would make the public aware that that's where there's a pedestrian right-of-way?
I don't believe, I mean, I wouldn't think so. You know, if there's nothing that's actually been constructed there, then, then no, I don't believe so. You know, from a practicality standpoint, I don't know that they would go through and rebuild the trail and get equipment in there and mobilize things until they're ready to build the house. I think they'd use a lot of the same equipment to do both. But, you know, it's something we can certainly work out with staff to, you know, to look up what was proposed then, and what was approved, and just follow through with that. We're really not changing that at all with this application. We don't, you know, that's kind of, I guess, in the past, and we want to just honor what was ever promised then.
Okay. And I, I don't know what was promised there, I'd be surprised if it was requiring you to actually clear that path or do anything with it other than make it available, but if it's a path on paper in one of our approved plans, and it doesn't have any demarcation on it in real life that tells the public, hey, you can walk through here, it doesn't exist. Functionally wouldn't exist. And I suspect that if two years from now, I showed up on that street and started walking through their yard, they'd call me a trespasser and say, beat it.
Yeah, you'd probably be on the other guy's property anyway.
Or, I'm not sure how I would know where I was going.
Right.
So, I'd like to see as a part of whatever we're doing here, not just a research into whatever that other promise was, maybe there is a promise to clear that and, you know, get the brush, so there's some kind of, but I'd like to see, you know, not something enormous or elaborate, but some kind of a pedestal sign or-
Trail marker.
Trail marker, or something that says-
Don't get lost in there.
You know?
I was on the board, and Nelson was too, obviously, when this was done, and my, my understanding or my memory is that there was an intent to have something there to make it accessible and viable to the public. If nothing's ever been done, I can understand not doing that if you haven't developed the property, but-
And you haven't taken away the old one either, so.
Yeah, I mean, so, so there's some, but there ought to be something there, that's the whole reason we went through a huge, long discussion in this whole effort.
Sure.
Working with this and a lot of trouble with trying to figure out how to subdivide this property, and it humors me that you're back again trying to change it now, but that's the way it is, I guess.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, I have to believe that there was a good discussion about that.
Oh, neither was.
And again, I don't know what was said, that was before my time here, but, you know, whatever was said will, will be honored, for sure.
Okay. So I'd like to have that somehow reported back to us, so we know what was promised from before. And whether it was promised before or not, I think that we ought to consider as a part of our approval, putting a condition to require some sort of demarcation that this is a pedestrian way. And, you know, I don't know if you just mark it as Old Kings Highway, because that's the new Old Kings Highway. Or whatever it takes to-
Or the extension there.
Yeah, the extension, the substitute, alternative.
Alternate, alternate.
Alternate.
Alternate Old Kings Highway.
Other than dealing with this Old Kings Highway, I don't have a lot of heartburn about what you're proposing, I think that it's reasonable to do. I think that, as Robert outlined, you probably still have a situation that may need a variance, and you'll have to cross that bridge with the zoning board to see what they would do. It seems to me, I mean, I won't even comment on what I would do if I was in their position, but it doesn't seem to be the biggest ask in the world of the zoning board, to do something like that. Do others on the board have comments or questions about what would go on with that? Like I said, my biggest concern is what we do with that Old Kings Highway.
Yeah, I mean, that's the biggest concern, but, but that whole 42-22 lot and development on it, I guess that's the letter you got. You buttered-
Yes, and I'll read that.
Was very concerned at that last time about drainage and issues that, that would come to their house. And so I guess you need to really consider how that's going to impact going forward.
Yes.
Look, the one in the picture?
No, no, the memo from the staff on this project.
It's on the back, it's on the back of that, oh, mine was.
So, returning to our usual order of business, we've got to make a determination of whether this application is complete.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we consider that the application is complete and it contains enough information for us to invoke our jurisdiction and to make an informed decision.
Thank you for the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Desiree. All in favor of determining the application's complete, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero for that. There are none, waiver, request or required. Let's open up the floor for the public to weigh in and see if there's any abutters or citizens who wish to offer the board any information about this application. While the public hearing is open, let me read into the record the memo that Lynn has. This is from Robert and Sandra Lures of 17 Kramer Hill and Kramer Hill Road in Merrimack. It's dated June 18th, and it's in reference to this application. It says, planning board members, my wife and I have lived at 17 Kramer Hill Road since 1990 and respectfully request the board to consider the following comments related to subject lot line adjustment during the June 20th meeting. Unfortunately, I'll be out of town the night of the meeting, unable to attend in person, and therefore have to provide comments without the benefit of hearing the actual proposal by the property owners or their representatives. In general, we're not opposed to any lot line revisions that are in accordance with the standard town ordinances, but do have concerns if the changes impact Old Kings Highway. The old historic road through this parcel also runs across rear portions of our lot, and in fact is a recorded public right-of-way road on our deed. The portion of Old Kings Highway that cuts through many lots of Kramer Hill, Kramer Hill and Coles Rock Roads is widely enjoyed by residents and surrounding neighborhoods. The following photos of this historic road taken from the section that crosses my lot shows how established and well-traveled this road is today. Old Kings Highway has already been diverted by at least one homeowner on Eric Street, who has built a fence across it. The Heritage Commission and the Board of Selectmen recognized the value of this resource in 2004, as evidenced by the attached document, apparently prepared by Florence Brown, and there's no document attached. I believe the town should be consistent in its recognition and enforcement of right-of-ways, and that we should all be mindful of features of historic value and public interest. In short, we oppose any lot line changes that would have any negative impact on the public use and historic nature of this colonial-era road. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment during this process, and for your consideration in the management and preservation of this historic feature of our town. Respectfully, Bob Lures. So, that's now read into the record. While the public hearing is still open, is there anybody else who wishes to weigh in? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. I, I do want to, while I was reading that, this sort of, occurred to me some other questions about Old Kings Highway. If you're building with the access to Greenleaf Road, do you have a sense of where the home footprint is going to be for that lot?
Chris Payne, I'm the buyer for the, which lot are you talking?
The one on the left.
Both of them, actually.
Yeah, please.
22.
Okay, so on this lot right here, we have our 4K area, which is, you know, leach field area, septic signs, test pits back in here. My guess is the house would be probably somewhere in this area, on this. Again, that's your septic area as well. With the driveway coming off this way, you really have good topography in here to build a house, so my guess is, depending on the size of the house that ends up being built, you're really looking at something in this area, essentially over the existing line, kind of splitting on, onto both of those. But, but again, it's, it's kind of up to, I'm sure whoever builds on this property, it'll be kind of a custom job and, you know, wherever they can locate it, you know, reasonably, obviously dealing with constructability issues on this portion of the site. I believe Chris is actually looking and interested in, in building this for himself. Chris, do you know roughly where you're planning on putting the house?
Thinking, you know, up in that area.
The same area by the septic?
Yeah.
Correct.
Can you identify the location of the Lures' property on this map? I didn't find it in the abutters.
It isn't.
It's not, they're 17, they're further up the road.
To the right?
Yeah.
To the right, yeah. They're just, because Old Kings Highway goes through the back of their property, there are several lots further up Kramer Hill.
Up and to the right, yeah.
Up. So they're just talking about Kramer Hill, they're not talking about drainage issues that I thought would come up tonight.
Okay, alright.
The lot that is at the back of lot 2A, map 2A, lot 42, the furthest one, the last one we see is 15 Kramer Hill Road, so they'd be the next one after that.
Yeah.
1115, 17.
Right, and you can see the easement that kind of runs up in that direction.
Yeah. So, the driveways that you're putting for both homes will cross over the location of the old Kings Highway, but that's already been essentially traded out for that easement area along the edge of the property.
Yeah, whether or not this lot line adjustment happens, that would be happening, well, I mean, he could issue, I guess, an easement on, over to that area for lot 42-22, but for the lot 42, yes, you're absolutely correct, that would, that would already be happening.
Okay. So in essence, although that has continued to exist in real life, whatever, 2004 subdivision that Old Kings Highway was already swapped out for that new easement?
Correct.
So that's not really before us, even though we're sort of just getting to the point of developing that lot today?
Correct.
Other comments or questions?
It might be appropriate to ask for some marking on that as part of our-
Marking of the-
Marking of the right-of-way, of the-
The easement, yes, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree with that. Tom, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, in, in recollection from the last time we talked about this property, the talk, the discussion was in putting a driveway down to Kramer Road, which was going to be very difficult.
Correct.
And disturb the area and potentially affect runoff towards the, I believe it was the Eden's House, map 2A, lot 4240.
Right.
So just a caution, that we'd be very careful that we don't-
Right, I, I think actually, this, this plan before you and this idea with where this driveway would go would actually help that situation.
Would improve that, yes.
Because we wouldn't be disturbing these steep slopes going, you know, up to the top of the hill here. So, you know, anytime you can stay away from steep slopes, you're going to avoid erosion issues, runoff issues, things of that nature.
The Eden property was heavily impacted already, before we even made the subdivision, but it's, it's got some water issues because of the runoff on these slopes, so whatever.
So any change is going to cause problems to them.
Yeah.
Even, even just some impervious area that might impact them, so be cautious for that, know that you've got a neighbor.
Looking at, looking at the topography on where that house will likely go, and even the leach field, you know, it's not directed directly towards that property, it's actually, you know, the existing topography would more or less stay the same with the exception of the, the footprint of the house. You know, that's more going directly west, towards lot 42-40 and also 42-39, rather than that lot 42-23 at the bottom of the hill. So there is kind of a natural divide there that more or less stays-
I think it's 4240 that's more concerned.
Yeah, that's what we're concerned about.
Oh, it was, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said 4223.
That they're potentially receiving some, I, I think that if your septic area is where you're showing it on your topo, and your house would be in that area or to the front of it, you probably wouldn't be making any changes that would affect 40, but maybe 39. But probably be intercepting water, not increasing it.
And you've got a lot of left that's going to divert it as well?
Yeah. Potentially, yeah. I mean, as, as Nelson pointed out, that whole development of Greenleaf Street impacted 40, so.
Yes.
So any, any effort seems to have some impact.
Sure.
Just be cautious with that, but I, yeah, I don't have any other argument, except they'd have to go to ZBA for it.
Yeah, you got to get a variance from the ZBA, because you're still not quite there on your frontage, but close. Desiree, you look like you're forming a question.
No, I was just disturbing.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
There are no waivers requested by the applicant, correct? So we're looking at determining final action on the application one way or another. What is the will of the board?
One other thing I'd like to point out, this will become a double-frontage lot when it's done, and that is not, technically, that's not allowed, so you may have to get some relief from that, if that, I think that's in the, in the zoning.
Is that zoning? Yeah, Gillian seemed to think it was acceptable. We had this discussion early on when the application first was submitted, and I don't have those notes in front of me, but this seems to be an acceptable submission.
It's a double-frontage lot, I don't know.
I don't know how you make that acceptable.
How you make it acceptable.
Yeah.
Beware.
Yeah, it has frontage on two roads. So one of the things that we should put in there is, and I don't think that it's all that practically necessary, but the usual requirement for a double-frontage lot is to say that you don't access driveways in both directions, and I don't think that you're going towards Greenleaf anyway.
Exactly.
So, we can put that condition in there, and Mother Nature will enforce it as much as we will.
No driveway to, I think he's trying to avoid the driveway to Kramer Hill Road, not, not Greenleaf.
Right.
Right, I'm sorry, I had my map upside down, or my, my road name reversed. Okay. I would like to know more about what Gillian's comments were on the double-frontage, but she's the planning and zoning administrator, and her interpretations are not, not for us to appeal or, or consider, we accept them as they be. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I think we make a motion to accept the, make, agree to grant conditional final approval to the applicant with the following precedent conditions, outlined in the memo dated June 15th from Mr. Thompson. Subject particularly that they have to go to the ZBA to get the resolution of the lack, the inadequacy of the frontage and the soils definitions.
And that they should mark somehow the pedestrian right-of-way?
Oh, yes, and sorry, yes, and we should add that we were asking that the Kings Highway clearly indicated that it's there and it's going to be maintained, preserved, or whatever word you like to use.
Yeah, the new right-of-way, not-
15-foot easing, sorry.
The 15-foot, pedestrian easing, okay. Is there a second for Alastair's motion?
I'll second, but I have one comment, I just, I wanted to make sure that the note that you had said, when we were talking about the, the two-in driveway, like that Kramer Hill not be used as a driveway access, that that's included in the motion.
Thank you, thank you very much, I will add that, is that the additional, that the, the 42, not, 42 dot, dot, 22 cannot have access to Kramer Hill.
Okay, so the motion is, all the conditions in the staff memo plus two added today, which are no access to Kramer Hill off 42-22, and that there's some markings, or trail markings installed for the 15-foot wide easement along the side of 42-22, is it 42-22?
42.
What's that?
It's just 42.
42.
Right.
Got it, 42 is the big one, on the right. Properly seconded, any further discussion? Nelson?
One minor point. I personally am kind of opposed to accepting and approving plans on condition that they receive a variance from the ZBA. In this particular case, I'll vote for this motion, because I think this is a, a minor thing, but in principle, in general, I do not like to approve plans conditioned on a, on a variance, or a ZBA action.
I think it's a fair comment, it's something that we've done on occasion from time to time when we thought it was the right thing to do, so I think it's good, it's good to say that there's no sort of automatic precedent that says we're going to automatically do that, but when it's the right thing to do, I think it's fair. Any other further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero.
Right, thank you very much.
That. The next item on our agenda? That's it. Next item on our agenda is item number seven, correct?
Hopefully.
Yep.
New Hampshire Hydraulics.
New Hampshire Hydraulics Incorporated as the applicant and Tammy J, Inc. as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of site plan review for a 9,600 square foot addition. The parcel's located at 3 Columbia Circle in the I-1 Industrial and Oxford Conservation and Elderly Overlay Districts, tax map 43, lot 25 and 26. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
This is New Hampshire Hydraulics. The only thing I would note is, for the conditions of approval, something to be clarified, we currently have a proposed conditions, a condition of approval about providing documentation about the lot consolidations being proposed. In the board's final motion, if you choose to approve this, we recommend that that be condition number two, is what that is under general subsequent, we move that up to preceding conditions.
Okay. Okay. Remind us of if and when we get to motion time on this one to, to do that. Thank you. Um, please introduce yourself and tell us about the project.
Good evening. I'm the owner, Anthony Helvatsis from Tammy J. and New Hampshire Hydraulics.
My name's Jason Lopez from Keitch Nordsstrom Associates. Uh, again, we're here tonight to present a, um, site plan, uh, for New Hampshire Hydraulics. Um, the application will conduct a voluntary lot merger, um, and then construct a nine thousand six hundred square foot addition, uh, to their existing facility. Um, again, the property's three Columbia Circle. Uh, everyone on the board aware of that location? Um, okay. Um, the property sits entirely within the industrial zoning district, and it contains, uh, it, it also has the elderly zoning and aquifer protection overlay districts. Um, we had, uh, and we have, uh, already gone to the Conservation Commission, received comment from them. They had, I believe it was three comments. Uh, they wanted, uh, incorporated into a revised plan set. Uh, start with a little history. Uh, again, it's comprised of two lots. We have lot twenty-five, lot twenty-five being, uh, one point six acres. Lot twenty-six that contains the existing building, uh, that's one point seven acres. After co-, uh, combining the two lots, merging those, uh, we'll have one point three acres, and we will have a total of four hundred feet of frontage on Columbia Circle. Uh, the existing, uh, facility here shown in yellow, um, one, uh, ten thousand two hundred square feet. In the front portion is primarily office space. In the rear is their workshop where they perform, uh, maintenance and repair to hydraulic equipment. Um, the existing structure is connected into municipal water, sewer, and, uh, public utilities. Uh, back in nineteen ninety-five is, uh, when New Hampshire Hydraulics began its operation at this, uh, property, and, uh, they have the sole business on the property, and they perform maintenance and repair to all things hydraulic, cylinders, motors, pumps, valves, hammers. Um, they all, they offer a pickup and delivery service. Uh, so a lot of times equipment needs to be maintained. Uh, you know, a company contractor on some, you know, off-site project will remove, uh, the prod, you know, whatever needs to be maintained. Uh, they have, uh, staff that goes out, will pick it up. Occasionally, uh, companies, larger companies that do the, uh, removal of the, the product, uh, they'll come and deliver it to the site. Um, it is not a, um, a retail-type facility with, uh, a large customer base in and out. Um, the... The existing building, uh, again, houses repair. Um, go back to the existing conditions plan here. So currently, as they operate, um, they have a lot of exterior, uh, outdoor racking, a lot of products stored outside, um, a few exterior sheds, uh, paved area behind the building, and then they, they store stuff over in what's a gravel lot over here. Um, so over the years, they've grown, uh, outgrown the building, uh, in need of more interior storage space. Um, they want to improve the operation, the function, and the, the way people can get in and out of the site and the way they move their product around on the site. Um, so now, uh, they're looking at expanding that building. Um, hop back a little bit. Uh, back in two thousand, Keitch Nordsstrom Associates brought, uh, forward a variance and a new site plan for ex- the expanded building. That was going to be an eighteen thousand one hundred square foot addition, uh, extending back into this lot. Uh, that plan was conditionally approved by the board, uh, but was never perfected by, uh, obtaining final signatures. Um, so that, uh, has since expired. Um, during that process, uh, the site was reviewed and a spill prevention, control, and countermeasure plan was developed, put into place, and they've been operating off that plan since. Um, so this plan, we were asking that they just go through and update any of the documents. Uh, just check that over. Update, make sure the spill kits are in place, and we've notated that. Um, the, uh... So in the existing site, um, I'll add a little clarification. Um, Tony and I were discussing the project. Um, I've got some stuff notated on the plan. I guess when you get a Portuguese man that talks with his hands and a Greek man, uh, there wasn't a translator. So I've got some stuff shown here that we need to get some, uh, make sure the board's clear on what we're doing. Uh, add some correction. I, I had notated some of these sheds, uh, particularly this, this shed here and another smaller shed over here to be removed. In fact, he needs to keep those. Uh, so we'll need to work with the fire department on the proper placement of these. Uh, this shed up in this area is, uh, waste oils and hydraulic fluids, and it's got a secondary containment system for those, uh, those units. So given the, the, the nature of the business, that, that shed needs to be maintained. But because of the nature of the materials stored in there, uh, we think it's appropriate to get direction from the fire department on that placement. So a revised plan will maintain that shed in a location agreeable to the fire department. Um, also, there's a smaller shed here that I had notated to be removed. Again, that's going to main, be maintained. Uh, he stores, um, some, uh, sand salt mix in there and also, uh, like speedy dry type product and spill kit product in there. That needs to maintain, be maintained on the site. Again, we'll, we'll have to find a, a home for that that's appropriate. Um, and we're looking at, uh, you know, s- some of this other storage racking. Um, we'll be adding some additional racking. Uh, we have a apron we're proposing across the back of the building. Currently, today, he has some exterior racking along the back of the building. We'll do the same thing here. The idea is to get some of that racking that's out in the parking lot and around the property. That's going to be coming in, but there's still a need for the way they transport the materials off of trucks, you know, stage it, ready to get into the building, rack and store in there, go through the process. There's still a need for some exterior racking in order to move stuff in and out of the building appropriately. So we'll work with, uh, I'll, I'll work with, uh, Tony on that to make sure revised plan will, will properly document that stuff. Uh, and again, we're also going to add in a few, um, uh, larger parking spots for trailers. He'll have product that come on and off the site. Some of it's delivered on trailers. Too large to pick up, uh, you know, by forks and, and, and move in that manner. So they'll come in on a larger bed. We'll delineate some larger spaces on the lot for, uh, specifically trailer parking. Um, so wanted to add some clarification before, uh, we go too far there. Um, so his business has grown, as I stated. Uh, they currently have about forty employees, um, thirty of them on site, about ten people are sales and service that, that are on the road. Um, the improved, uh, you know, operations of the site, uh, will expand parking behind the addition, and what we're looking to get is a, a movement through the site to be able to come in the site and organize it, having a, a drop-off area or an indoor in this new, new proposed addition. And then he'll be able to bring through the, the material and product through the build and process it, repair it, and then bring it back out and have an outdoor. So the whole new layout i- is, is workflow-related. Um, and we're going to increase the amount of parking on the site. Uh, currently, uh, the calculations show thirty-five spaces are required. We're providing forty-three. Uh, we may trim a few of those out, um, looking at truck turning radiuses, um, you know, with the interest of, of having, uh, some spots for, uh, trailer, uh, demarcation. Again, the addition, uh, is going to be nine thousand six hundred square feet. Uh, majority of that is going to be for, uh, storage and warehousing. Uh, but about a third of that, what, what happens is when the product comes into the site, uh, there's a certain amount of prep work that needs to be done in order to prepare it for the maintenance work. Some of it's degrease and some of it is, uh, you know, further separation of parts and pieces that need to be worked on. So it'll come into the shop and be prepped for pros-, you know, to go through the maintenance process. And then when it's all done, it's brought back out into a, a shop area where they'll clean it up, paint it, and get it ready for delivery back to, uh, the customer. So we will have about a third of this area that is not the heavy maintenance mechanical length, but the preparation and the finishing touches as the stuff comes in and just prior to it, uh, just before it goes out back to the client. We did look at, uh, the existing drainage. Uh, today, uh, the drainage in general goes to the rear of the property. There's an existing, uh, infiltration pond out back and a oil grit separator. Um, currently, all the water from this hill and, and the site flows down through that oil grit separator. With, with the addition of a little extra impervious for the parking, uh, in the building, uh, we were looking at trying to separate the off-site flow runoff from the runoff, uh, from this work zone. We incorporated a drain, uh, yard drains around the ex- exterior of the building. We'll also pick up the shed roof with some roof drains, running into a closed system. Drainage, uh, catch basins will outlet in a grass swell back here, and then go through a pipe into the infiltration basin. So that's essentially going to catch what we'll call the clean water, um, and get it right out to the infiltration pond. That's going to reduce the amount of runoff that we put through the oil grit separator, uh, reduce the turbulence and help increase the efficiency of that unit. Uh, then we've isolated by addition of some slope granite curb and a earth berm back here. Um, that will help force the runoff, plus with our grading, over to, we have a swell out in the back that then forces all that runoff through the oil grit separator. It's a primary, uh, primary, um, drainage manhole with a hood. Then it goes into a larger, uh, thousand gallon tank for secondary treatment, and then it'll head out into the pond. The pond, we're looking at lining the bottom with, uh, wood chips that they have, they'll have a maintenance program to be able to maintain those, um, as needed. So with, with the drainage improvements and that separation of the work zone and, and the off-site flow, we think we've made some, uh, pretty substantial improvements to, to this drainage system. We have, uh, one waiver that we're going to request, and that is for, uh, sidewalk to be constructed along the frontage on Columbia Circle. And there were two other items that were brought up in the staff memo. Uh, one was lighting plan. We are going to provide a lighting plan and not ask for a waiver on that. And the other item that was brought up was, uh, length of the building facade. Um, and we do not believe, uh, we need, uh, we believe we're in compliance, and, and a waiver is not required on that.
So does your building have a two-hundred-foot stretch of un- unbroken facade?
Uh, it's a hundred and sixty feet. We don't have it dimensioned, uh, but this front office bump-out breaks up the facade, and measurement from, from this corner to the far corner is a hundred and sixty-five feet.
Yeah.
So less than two-hundred feet. Um, so therefore, uh, waiver is not required. So that puts us on to the waiver for sidewalks.
Yeah, that's an easy one. Um, let's ask questions about some other things. You talked about the traffic flow into the building.
You should probably accept it real quick before you get into questions.
Okay. What's the will of the board on whether the application's complete? Thank you, Robert.
I'll make a motion that we su- um, accept the application as substantially complete for us to make a determination.
Second for Desiree's motion. Nelson has the second.
Right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero. So, um, I just wanted you to explain a little bit better when you talked about the traffic flow around the site and into the building and where things were going to go in the building, because on all of my plans, I can't find doors anywhere where the, whatever gets in.
All right. Um, it may be hard to see. They're not labeled, uh, but I do have approximate location. The final plan, still plan, is not complete yet. Um, but we have one door, uh, oh, a large, it'll be a large overhead door, call it the indoor, and we'll have another door, um, to the right side, uh, you know, for the exit, the outdoor.
And on the existing building, are these two buildings going to be interconnected inside?
Yes, in- internally, they'll be connected. Um, a, a lot of their equipment, uh, very heavy. This is, this isn't pistons, hydraulic pistons and stuff that you or I could just go and pick up. Uh, I mean, they're, they're all handled by, you know, forklifts. Um, so they need to have, and that's part of the issue, how they've outgrown, is getting that equipment into the building. I mean, they're going from workstation to workstation, moving the stuff with, with a forklift.
Okay.
They need a little more elbow room between, uh, pieces of equipment. So they'd like to, uh, remove all this racking and storage that they have in here and push that over this way, move some of the exterior rack in, and be able to create a little wider work zone for each piece of equipment.
Makes perfect sense to me in terms of what works for them. I'd just ask you to modify the plan to delete the interior barrier wall that appears to separate those two...
Correct.
...buildings, um, and somehow provide a little bit of clarity on to where the doors are that are going to come and go, um, so that you've got a sense of where the traffic flow's going to be, and then it's going to be consistent with what you told us. Um, do, does the old building or the new building, um, have or will have a floor drain?
Uh, no floor drains.
Good. Um, you said, you talked a little bit about spill kits. You talked about your grit separator in the back. Tell me what you have and what you're going to have in terms of spill kits and provisions to keep oil where it belongs. Can you address a little bit of that?
Yeah, I can address that. Um, we've been, uh, trying to utilize the best practices for any spills and, and such. We do collect the oil, and we do burn it on site. Uh, we have waste oil burners also. Uh, what else, uh, has happened over the years is because we discharge to the town sewer, uh, we've had, uh, the wastewater treatment, uh, down there come up, and they inspect us every six months, do water samples in our steam cleaning operation, which is really where all the residual oil grit is steamed off of the equipment as we put it through process once we get it in. And, uh, since we built it and, and moved in there in ninety-five, we haven't had any issues. Uh, they do an inspection, walk around, look at different things, including our, um, separator that we do have, that we've had built, and, uh, we're getting some help from them also to, uh, formulate a, a, I think it's a SWIP.
It, it's similar to the, uh, a SWIP because of their discharge into the municipal system.
Yeah, yeah, just will also...
Tell me what that is. I don't know what that term means.
Um, the, uh, there's a stormwater, uh, prevention pollution plan. Um, but where they discharge, some of their equipment discharges, there's pre-treatment systems, but the final discharge goes to the sewer.
Okay.
There's, there's, uh, federal permitting that the town needs to comply with, and because they're discharging into the system, the town is now asking and working with, with Tony to make sure they're in, in, their plans are in line with ultimately what the town is responsible for. So they've been working with the sewer department and... So they've been working with the sewer department in formalizing a written plan.
Okay.
But also to clarify, they, like I said, they have been coming every six months to evaluate what we're doing and, you know, given us suggestions before with Roger Dakota. Now there's a new director, I believe. And they're working with us too. And I feel very comfortable and confident that we're, you know, doing the right thing and doing it correctly.
That's fantastic, and I'm glad to hear that they're inspecting it and that you're working with them and being correct with this.
Yeah, they've been doing that, like I said, for, since we built the pretreatment system for the oil.
How does the, how does the pre-treat, for the area where you're steam cleaning equipment and getting the dirt and grease off of it, how are you pre-treating that and getting it ready to go into the sewer?
It's actually a system that was designed by a company, Environmental Services. In fact, there's been a few sold around. But basically, it's a large enclosure, probably at least this big, that we put up. There's a grate so that the water and such falls through on a big plastic pan. It comes down with some grating initially, goes, drops through five, four pre-filters. They're basically large sacks of filter. Then it goes through a baffle system, I think, and there's a, you know, the, a baffle system that brings it to the back unit where it's pumped in. And then it has to be metered through the actual pretreatment that's done. It even has oil in it. I don't know the exact how it, how it works other than if it's metered correctly and it goes through, the water comes out clear. Or as long as it's less than a hundred parts per million, that's more than acceptable to the town for discharge. And that's, again, that's what we do, and that's worked really well for us. We do end up with sludge from that whole process, cleaning it and all the residual. And we have, I'm not sure exactly the company, but we have a couple of things that we have a waste hauler come in and they take it off. They've tested it. It's non-hazardous, which is nice, but they take and burn it. They, you know, we put it in drums and then they'll come every two or three or four months. We have all the manifests and that's all in line.
Okay. So that hundred parts per million at the discharge, at the final discharge of your steam cleaning system, that's where the town, that's what they're checking when they come every couple of months?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for explaining all that. It's interesting.
More than I have to, I'm sure you'd want to be concerned about such matters.
Yep. The parking lot that you've drawn, I think the staff's indicated is more than enough parking. And so if you reconfigure that to accommodate your trucks, I'm sure there's a workable way to do that. That can certainly be a condition of approval that, at least in my view, a condition of approval that would not hold us up here tonight. I don't, does anybody else have comments or questions about the, Desiree?
I didn't catch if you've talked about the architecture of the building. I don't see any elevations or anything of it. I know that I kind of did my check here, making sure that your length of the building wasn't too long. And you can tell that's okay. Building material, are you looking to match the existing?
Pretty much, yes. It's a steel-constructed prefab building that we're going to have erected.
Okay. And the roof is a flat roof that'll?
No, it's going to be pitched. I don't know if they're going to actually bash the old one.
That's something.
We're trying to keep it as close so that it will be able to look good.
Yeah, trying to match the front roof line. I didn't mention that.
Yeah, other than, no, it's a little wider than the existing building.
Right, so it might be a little higher.
But maybe the center line they're going to follow.
So the slope of it, like on the existing building, it slopes towards the street and then towards the back?
Towards the back. They'll match up to the peak here, then this peak will extend a little more and then out to the back.
So that'll be lower?
No, the roof heights here will match.
I know, but if you connect it on that front corner, yeah, if you connect it on there and they match the same and you don't center it, then you're lower on your back.
It would come further.
Yeah, so your roof line's going to be down lower on the other side where you're putting the trucks.
That, no, wouldn't affect the trucks at this point.
Okay.
Getting it in. We still, I think, I think it's, you know, we don't have the exact engineer, engineering completed, but we do have quotes on the building, so. And it, I believe it's twenty feet high or twenty-five feet, which is what the existing building roof line is from the center and then how that's down. But I didn't know that was actually how, that would be required or anything because I think John has some sketches on the building, you know, but to match it. But there's plenty of room as far as trucks backing in or bringing the equipment in. They don't, they don't really drive in. It's the four trucks that unload and bring the product in.
It's not a requirement for us. It's just a question for you.
I see.
Because we can't, we have no idea what we're approving for this. Basically, we're approving an outline of a building. There's nothing committing you to, to match the architecture right now or any of that, so.
Yeah, we'd like to, we'd like to. We think it would look better that way too, to do that.
And I didn't mention, which I should have mentioned on the onset, this application will require action from the zoning board. The existing building was built back when the zoning was a thirty-foot setback. So it was compliant at the time of construction. Zone has changed. The setback has changed. So the whole front facade of the building is, you know, a foot to just a little more, just a little less than two feet over the front setback. And to put this addition on to try to reduce cost, trying to keep that front column line, that front facade in line, the foundation continuation, it's cheaper for construction to have that all in one line.
Aesthetics too.
The idea is to move forward and go to ZBA and try to seek relief for that front setback in order to match that front facade. If we're denied there, increased cost, but we would move it back to comply with that front setback. So we are just shy of about two feet here over the front setback.
So you mentioned that you're storing the used oil in the shed in the back. One of the sheds anyway. On a different page. Do you have use for, or do you have fresh unused oil that you're using to put it back into the equipment? Or does that go, when it goes back on the?
That's stored inside. There's a little of that that we use. We use it mostly for testing the equipment when it's completed, but we don't ship them out with oil. They go out without oil.
Okay. When you say a little, how much do you mean?
Two fifty-five gallon drums probably at any point in time.
Okay.
You know, the new oil. And we may, we may have some five-gallon pails on hand for customers who have an emergency that need oil also.
They can take it?
Yeah.
So you mentioned painting, I think.
Yeah, we do paint.
Spray painting?
Spray painting.
Oil-based paints?
It's, I think it's a lacquer-based paint.
Okay. Do you have to have any kind of air handling to deal with that?
Oh, definitely. Yeah, we have a paint booth that we had put in.
Okay. Have you discussed with the fire department any proper storage of the paints and solvents, anything that goes with it?
They've been in and inspected. We have, you know, the paint stored properly and.
And the flame cabinets on it.
Oh, yeah, it's all, the sprinkler systems are in, including in that paint booth also.
And the sprinkler system will be expanded into this new, to this new addition. That's already been part of the conversation.
Okay. Just can't find anything to pick on here. Nelson?
Yeah. I'll find something here.
Were you on the approval in two thousand? Weren't you on the board?
Yes.
He can answer that one, surely, with almost anything in town.
That's an easy one. I wanted to ask about review of the drainage system. Has that gone to CLD?
Yes, it's currently under review with CLD. We just have not received the comments quite back yet.
Okay. I'd like to know if there's more or less runoff leaving the site with the new system as compared to the old system.
We've decreased it. What I've done is I've gone. See the existing, the existing pond? It's increased probably forty, you know, another forty percent of the size. You know, it's increased based on the calculations. And I didn't like how high the peak was in the larger storm events. I wanted to add a little more storage. So it is, it's even a little further oversized than what it needed to be.
Where's the ultimate runoff from that? Is there an exit?
It's all sand and gravels, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all on-site and filtered.
There is a little runoff. You can see, again, the larger. There is a small portion of the site up here in the front that runs off to, there's a catch basin here in Columbia and then one out towards Route Three. Some of the runoff does make its way. But we're not doing any development in that area or modifications in that area to increase runoff.
Yeah, okay, good. You mentioned, quickly, you mentioned lighting plan. And I didn't quite catch what your proposal was regarding lighting of this site, especially night lighting in the back.
Yeah, no pole lights or anything around. It's all going to be wall packs on the side of the building on my plan. I have four going across the back of the proposed addition. Talking with Tony, he, for security, he would like a wall pack unit on the side and two on the front because of, you know, the product that they have exterior on the building. They have cameras on the, at the facility and they want to have cameras around the whole building and some site lighting. But it'll all be downcast type wall packs.
It's all downcast and wall packed.
And we'll provide the lighting plan on that.
You, I'm sorry.
We will provide a lighting plan on that, yes.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. You mentioned that the conservation commission had three comments. Could you tell us what they are?
I can if you can, because I got their email. It's the usual, specify the fertilizer to be the. The slow release, low nitrogen. Low phosphate nitrogen. Hay, call your hay straw. And they said that your landscape plan has non-native invasive species in it, so.
Might have added on a burning bush that I need to take off.
So using native species was the third.
And those will be added as notes to these plans?
Yeah, we'll need to make the modification and go over that with staff for the final plan, yeah.
Okay. And generally speaking, your site right now is pretty crowded in the back. There's a lot of stuff out there. Will some of that get into these buildings and be cleaned up?
Most definitely. That's all part of what we'd like to do, for sure. And a lot of the stuff that is out back is, it's basically good raw material. I mean, the rebuilding we do, it's almost recycling of, you know, components. And the whole idea too is we have accumulated some equipment that we really want to refurbish and sell, but we do not have the room to process them. So over the last four or five years of getting busier and that accumulation has made it very tough to deal with in piles. But we're in, we need to do a complete cleanup and revamp just to do the expansion to make it happen. That in itself will, you know, give us a chance to really go through. Once the building is up and operative in that warehouse area, excuse me, it gives us a chance to bring some of that in and process it and utilize it, resell it and so on, as opposed to just not, you know, doing anything with it, which business-wise, I'd rather keep it and process it.
Do you have machining facilities in the?
Yeah, we do machining and fabricating there too, yeah.
Okay, I was just hoping you'd take note of the fact.
Most definitely.
Okay, thank you.
I do and I will, and there'll be quite a difference, I'm sure.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Other members of the board. Let's do a public hearing. Are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Both of them. Can you guys let these, let them have the table for a little bit and then we'll switch back? So as a reminder, please sign in on the clipboard and then introduce yourself and tell us what you'd like us to consider.
Actually, my only really concern is, I live at Eight Oak Street.
You skipped over the instructions. Introduce yourself.
My name's Bob Langis. I live at Eight Oak Street, which is just up the hill from the property. And my only real concern is the boulder retaining wall. Is that going to be modified at all? Because I'd really hate for my backyard to slide into his parking lot.
I'm sure you would. So, okay, we'll remember to ask him about that a little bit. The dialogue has to be from you to us and then we'll talk to him, so.
That's my major concern. There's no noise issues down there. They've been good neighbors. That's the only issue, that my backyard stays where it is.
All right, we'll talk to him about that. I appreciate that you've, that you've offered them some compliments and things because we don't get a whole lot of that.
Do you want the map?
No, I'm going to use this one, thank you. My name's Debbie Chardier, and I'm directly behind the property.
Okay. Let's point to your house so I know where it is.
It's above the green sw, green area.
Yeah, I'm behind that pit that's out back right now, and my property actually goes up and tees out. And that was one of my big concerns, which is his, because I know when the land got, their property got part of the hill taken down before they had an issue with it falling. And I'm concerned that they're not going to be behind my property. Do you know what I'm saying? Because mine's a hill too. I just want to make sure that none of that is going behind into my property. And my concern is way up there on the green part because, I don't know if you can show me where my property actually ends according to that. I know I'm talking to you, so.
Just to the left of the, of the green circle is where your property ends, where his finger is.
Well, not according to the satellite map. No, she's.
Yeah, my property goes this way and then out to a T.
Right. Take a look at this and see if you can tell. It should be the second house on the street.
No, it's not a house. It's the office building where Westfall Electronics is. It's our property, it's right on Route Three.
Okay, so, okay, you are right here. I'm sorry. So for the benefit of folks at home, because she wasn't at the microphone, it is the property on Route Three, and Lynn is correct that it's right behind the existing place. So explain to me the topography there and the hill that you're concerned about or what's going on with that.
My property actually goes up and then to a T. So part of the T overlaps where they're down the hill is not my property. And my concern is that that hill will not be taken out or removed.
Sure. Well, they certainly can't go on your property to do anything. But your property will be everything that's along the back line of both of these lots. Your property goes virtually all the way.
Okay, but that's showing straight.
Yep, and your T is. Hang on a second.
I just, and I apologize. I just got notification of this meeting tonight, so I didn't have any time to.
What you see here, this, see the green circle?
Yeah.
That's right here.
Right.
And then the red comes like this, okay? So your property comes here, up, and then over.
Perfect, okay, all right.
You just, all you can see is this part here.
Okay.
That's where the top of that.
Perfect.
Okay, you just can't see where it tees.
That helps.
You're fenced in the area?
Yeah.
Right here.
All right. So that was my one biggest concern. And my other question was the hole that's in the backyard, I know you guys are calling it a spill kick or it's the big drainage thing?
Yeah, there's two, there's two right next to each other. And one is what he's calling a grit separator, which is the pink area. And the other is an ordinary infiltration basin, which is a.
Empty hole? Is that what, it's a hole in the ground essentially?
Depression, I mean, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be like a manhole, but it's a general depression in the ground that's intended to store rainwater and infiltrate into the ground.
Okay, and that there will be enlarged?
A lot, a lot larger.
On his property.
Okay, no, I understand that, but the drainage going in there now, that hole's never got water or anything in it. So are they, when they add to it, is that going to create water out in that back area?
It's, their design is not intended to put water off onto your property, but the pond or detention basin or whatever you want to call it will get bigger. Now, will it ever actually have water in it? Well, if they've got sandy soils, you may, you know, once in fifty years see a little water in there.
Okay.
If it's, if it's well-drained, and if it's one that kind of holds water for a little while, maybe you would see standing water in it that looks like a pond.
Okay.
So I can't say whether they would or not, but it wouldn't come off of your property, off to your property. But their design does add a lot of pavement and a lot of roof space that is going to put that water in there.
Mm-hmm.
If it's well-drained, it's going to go right into the ground, which is great. That's what you want to have happen.
Okay, all right. Because I know on our property sometimes we get backup from the storm drain in the front, and I just don't want to add to more problems to that, so that's great.
Understood.
And I think that's it.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And with that, since there's nobody else in the room to be in line to make a comment, we don't have any other written testimony to offer up, so we'll close the public hearing. Let me invite the applicant back and have you speak to some of the comments that you heard and the two folks that had a, of public testimony.
If you, for the first gentleman, if you could just remind me of specifics you want.
He's looking at the retaining wall that's back there between your property and his to make sure that.
Make sure that hill doesn't slide down.
The, yeah, the, we are expanding that retaining wall. There's an area of some fill-in waste material right here. That will come out pretty much where the tree line is, exists today. The wall will be pushed back to that tree line, give or take about forty, forty feet off that property line, off that fence line. It's going to, it's not going to encroach any closer than the existing wall. It's going to continue in that same plane and then start to peel away from your property. It'll, it'll pull away, and then we're just going to daylight out on this end over towards the expanded infiltration pond. So we're not going to, we're not going to be moving that whole thing and pushing that towards your property. As for the infiltration pond, yes, enlarging that quite a bit. We will be putting more water towards it, but with that sandy material, and I oversize it a little bit, because I wanted to make sure we had. I like to, I like to know that it's going to hold the larger storm events, and we're not going to have overtopping of the berm, so I made it a little, it's a little larger than it needed to be. But that, that should accommodate the increased development we have on the property.
So I think that you did manage to address all of the comments that were made by the abutters to explain some of those details. Are there other comments by members of the board? The applicant's got several waivers outlined in the staff memo, although the lighting plan is not going to be one of them, because the applicant's going to provide that. They've suggested that number two is not necessary, which leaves us just with the sidewalk to determine. What's the will of the board with respect to the applicant's request for a sidewalk waiver?
Come on, Mr. Sidewalk.
Let him have it. Nelson?
I would move that we waived the sidewalk on this particular site primarily because the specific circumstances relative to the site plan, such that the waiver would probably carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. Anyway, there's no other sidewalk on this, on this street anywhere, and probably not going to be.
Desiree?
A second.
Desiree, seconds. Any further discussion on sidewalk waivers?
I'd like to hear Tom's comments.
Tom, do you have any?
No, I'm not going to comment, thank you.
Okay. If there are no other comments on the sidewalk waiver, all in favor of the motion to grant the sidewalk waiver, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero to grant the sidewalk waiver. There being no other waiver requests, nor public testimony, nor questions from the board, it's appropriate to consider whatever final action the board would like to make.
Chairman, I make a motion. We grant final acceptance, subject to the conditions mentioned in the memo from Robert Price dated June 14th, 2017, with the particular note that the volant, we need, the department or the town will require official notification of the lot merger to be provided prior to signing of documents. Did I get that right, Robert?
You did, and the other one was that the, or maybe I can suggest, that the applicant obtained fire department approval for the relocation of the two sheds that he spoke of earlier.
Please, thank you, yes.
Is there a second for Aleister's motion? Lynn has the second. Robert, do the staff's conditions in the memo include the things like the need to go to the ZBA for a variance?
Yes, that's in there.
And.
Lighting plan?
No, they don't provide.
They voted.
They haven't done it yet.
So it happened.
But that they're going to be required.
That's what I'm asking. Since it was, yeah, since it was not waived, it would be a requirement that they provide that prior to plant signature.
And that they meet all the pending comments from CLD, since we haven't finished peer review?
That's in there as well, yep.
And the conservation commission's requirements?
Yeah, they'll be added to the, to the final decision letter.
Okay, so there's nothing left uncovered, hopefully. If there's no further, Nelson, go.
I just don't see the lighting plan in here.
No.
Well, it's a requirement of the regulations, so if we don't waive it.
It's not included at this time.
They're striking it through.
They haven't waived it, so it has to be included.
But these are the conditions that were involved.
It ought to be listed. It's not specifically listed as, as being needed to be provided as a condition of approval. You can certainly add that. We had it suggested under the waivers, but since they're not going to actually seek the waiver on that, you can swap it out and say the applicant's to provide a lighting plan. I can certainly do that.
Would you please? I would, is that okay to the movers and takers?
It is. Now, Robert, was this, wasn't there one that you wanted to move from a subsequent?
Yeah, the facade.
The voluntary merger, I've said it's got to be a main condition.
All right.
If I could ask one question just for clarification. Tony and I had a discussion last Friday on this part of the process where we have not seen all the conditions. We work, just for clarification, we'll work through all further comments, CLD and so forth with staff. If we have an issue with one or two items, then we come back before the board to discuss the, okay.
Yeah, correct. So right now, it's a condition of approval, and if for some reason you want relief from that being a condition of approval, you'd come back and say, hey, they want us to do.
Are you comfortable with that?
Most definitely. That's fair enough.
They want a twelve-foot fence, and we don't want to do that.
Yeah.
Almost talking ourselves out of a condition of, conditional approval, huh? I just, I just wanted to make sure Tony was comfortable with that out of the process.
It's an important clarification, no, and absolutely all applicants do that. Usually I do give the warning, when you take conditional approval subject to CLD's unpublished conditions, you may get a tough one.
That's, that's.
If you do, then you've got to come see us. The other option is wait for those results, and then we'll all talk about them together, and then we'll, you know, so it really, two ends to the same result.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I would recommend, if they're willing to issue conditional approval, if we need to come back on an item, we'll come back. If not, then you're all set, and we move forward with staff.
But like I said, I think that's fair. It makes sense. I don't have a problem with that.
All right, thank, thank you.
No problem at all. So if there's no other discussion by the board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero for final approval. So how do we end up with three Keach projects, and Steve doesn't make it down here? Lives in town, right?
I don't know.
Good manager, I would think.
Yeah.
To get him off my Christmas list.
He has good staff, so he shouldn't have to come.
There we go.
I guess so. Great, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you guys for coming.
Yes, thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is item nine, which is the approval of the minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. And I see on this note Executive Park Potential Development Proposal. Robert, what's that?
Tim has asked me to raise this question on behalf of the, I guess, potential applicant in that project. The question is, the applicant for that project has inquired if the planning board would like to or be willing to have a conceptual discussion based solely on traffic issues for that project prior to their submittal of a formal application on that project.
Sure.
And if you want, Director Thompson's offered his own thoughts on that as well, if you'd like me to, okay. His comments are, while this is an unusual request, it probably makes sense for this particular project, but staff would expect that escrow would be provided for the peer review of the traffic information that they want to have discussed, and that the peer review should be complete before the conceptual discussion takes place.
Yeah, that was the first thing that occurred to me, is when we discuss traffic, it's all going to be about experts' reports, and what do they say? And having a conceptual where we just say, you're going to have to go get an expert report, isn't going to do us much good.
Yeah, the idea is that they would go forward, if, with the board's blessing, they would go forward, get that report done, we'd have it peer reviewed, and then they'd come in here with the conceptual just to review that traffic's report.
I think that that's a good approach.
I think that's one of the key issues on that, that plan, that has to be addressed before anything else gets done.
Yes.
Particularly the given that Amherst Road is already a problem, and it's going to, and very shortly it's going to be an even bigger problem for a few months.
Well, by the time they get around to that, that'll, that'll be done.
But we'll, we'll miss that bit.
That'll be none wrong at all. That's such a key issue on this particular project.
I agree with you.
That's the number one issue right there.
Yeah, and, and knowing that we're going to have a room full, when, and this room may not be big enough for the folks that want to come talk about this traffic issue for that particular site, we're doing it over several hearings may offer everybody a chance to.
Great idea.
Come in and give us that input. This is a project on Executive Park Drive, which doesn't have a formal submission yet, but in essence, it's a large multifamily residential development behind the wood, for the brand-new Woods Springs Suite Hotel.
Where the old hotel? Where they knocked down the old hotel.
Yes, they've appeared before the ZBA to obtain a variance to be allowed to do multifamily residential there, and they received that variance. And so we know generally what the scope of it is, and it's something like two hundred and eighty.
Mm-hmm.
Units of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments.
That was the conceptual that was presented to the ZBA, and I think you guys had the same.
We also have seen it.
The previous, the last fall.
So, sufficient feedback?
Yep, I've got it.
Okay. Does anyone have any other discussion or possible action regarding other items of concern?
Just two quick things, Mr. Chairman. One, the, the boat dealer, Skips Murray, he still hasn't put up his fence. I just asked the staff to, I don't know how, what your process is to enforce those rules.
We have, let's see, I know he's coming up on his six-month conditional approval deadline, but he's got, we've got a calendar, little tickler reminder to show up in the, so we're contacting him, hey, you still need to submit your plan, which is also still outstanding, and all those other conditions that need to be addressed, so. And he is, I actually did bump into him on my way into a staff meeting a couple of weeks ago, so he's aware that he still has to get this stuff done.
Thank you for keeping.
And on that, and on that same site, the shrubbery in the front is impeding site distances and needs to be trimmed up?
Yep, that's part of that conditional approval, is the call, yep.
And while we're on fences, one other thing. The fence at, at Canal Shopping Center was damaged by the snowplows last winter. Part of it's broken down and cracked through. It's a nice-looking fence, except for the place where the snowplow pushed snow all over it and broke it. I don't know what our process is for, I mean, that's part of their site plan, it should be fixed up.
Yeah, if it's on the plan, it shows the fence needs to be there, and it's currently not, then we could send them a letter to say, your plan shows this here, you need to rectify that.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have other items of concern?
My complaint for the.
To raise or bring up. Seeing none, that brings us to the approval of the minutes of June 6th, 2017. What's the will of the board with respect to those minutes?
I'll move approved as printed.
Turn the microphone on and then make the motion.
I'll move approved as printed.
Move to approve as printed. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman, but I would suggest on page eleven, paragraph one, two, three, four, line two, we spell vehicles correctly.
No.